Welcome to the Supreme Court of the United Kingdom, where today we're hearing an appeal in the case of Rossendale Borough Council and Hurstwood Properties and others. A case concerned with business rates. And the essential question is whether a scheme, which on its face, as the consequence of the business rates are not payable, works in law or not. I'm hearing the appeal with four of my colleagues, whom I'll briefly introduce. Lord Hodge, the Deputy President of the Court.
Good morning.
Lord Briggs. Lord Kitchen. And Lord Leggett.
Good morning.
Where the case is described on our website, you can find out some details of it by going to the link for cases and then following the link for current case. We're going to be hearing first submissions on behalf of the appellant, which is the appellant of the local authorities, presented by Mr. Robert Matthew, Queen's Counsel. And so I'll turn now to Mr. Matthew and invite him to begin his submission.
Thank you, my lord. Lord, the two issues, legal issues, Lord, as your lordships realise, found each appeal and concern the ambit of the doctrines, if that's the correct word to use, of Ramsay, the case of Ramsay and the case of Prest. Lord, before addressing Ramsay and Prest, if I may, I would like to go to the detailed argument in those cases, go to the statutory basis of NDR, of the business rates, and look at the Local Government Act 1988. And then, having done that and had a brief look at the regulations made in right of that act, address in reply to the case for the respondents, the case of Brown, and then continue to answer the points which had been made in their case. And I hope that's an effective and efficient way of going through this appeal. Lord, it may be convenient. I hope the statutory survey will not take that long, but in electronic format, Lord, we could start at page 420 of the bundle.
And that is the
Lord, that's the the basic duty is being imposed on the valuation officer in section 41 of the 1988 Local Government Finance Act. And your lordship will see, he has to make, as valuation officer for the billing authority, has to compile and take lists for the authority, to be called its local non-domestic rating lists. And then, my lord, if we go to page 422 in electronic format, your lordship will see that that's for the Welsh lists. And then we move on to page 424. I hope I'm not going too fast, my lord.
Not so far, thank you.
At 424, that's the contents of the local lists. He is directed for local non-domestic rating, what he has to put into the lists, which are a vital part of the operation of NDR. Then, my lord, we go to the section. Well, sorry, back at page 424, my lord, I should have pointed out under section 42, two matters. Lord, one looks at subsection 1, your lordship can see that a local non-domestic rating list must show for each day of each chargeable financial year for which it is in force, each hereditement which fulfills the following conditions. And then, my lord, at subsection 3, for each day on which a redemptor is showing the list, it must also show whether any part of the redemptor is exempt from domestic, local or domestic rating. Then at subsection 4, he says each day on which a redemptor is shown on the list, it must also show the rateable value of the redemptor. But that's the basic structure of the scheme. And then, my lord, if one goes to page 426, finds that's the rural settlement list, so there are more lists to be concerned with there. And Lord, in subsection 2 there, a rural settlement shall have for each chargeable financial year, shall identify each such year, any settlements mentioned in subsection 3 below. So chargeable financial year is axiomatic for that as well. Then, Lord, if we go on to page 428, your lordship will see that in here, preparation and maintenance of the list, this is tied to chargeable financial years. You see that, Lord, in subsection 1 and subsection 2, in each chargeable financial year for which it's rolling. So the chargeable financial year is the essential ingredient in those provisions. And then, Lord, if one goes on to page 429, Lord, one has seen subsection 1, that the person shall as regards hereditement be subject to non-domestic rate in respect of a chargeable financial year in respect of any day in the year as follows. So the charge there is put for occupied herediments in terms of a chargeable financial year. And in subsection 2, I think, Lord, that is it gives the method of, it gives the calculation down on the basis of each day in that year. And Lord, one then goes to section 44A, which is at page 441. On I may, Lord, yes, that's dealing with partly occupied herediments. And again, my lord, it shows that it's meant to cover every kind of hereditement. And then we go to the 444, Lord. One comes to the charging provision. And in terms of section 45 and subsection 1, which is important, Lord, it says a person, rate payer, shall as regards hereditement, be subject to a non-domestic rate in respect of a chargeable financial year if the following conditions are fulfilled in respect of any day in the year. So, my lord, my point, of course, there is that what we find here, as we do in the structure of the Act, is the chargeable financial year is the essential ingredient. And the computation comes from the day in the year in that chargeable financial year. And that, of course, is the charging provision for unoccupied hereditments. And it all done at subsection 3, chargeable day is one which falls within the financial year in respect of which condition mentioned in subsection 1 above. And 45, at 447, there's a provision for unoccupied herediments zero rating. And that ties back to section 45, that's on section 1. Lord, at that, section 46, which is at page 449, Lord, it says the section applies with section 45 above. And the rateable value shown on any day, it's 424 as regards hereditement. So that ties in with the necessary listing. Then, my lord, we move forward to section 651, which is at page 454. Lord, your lordship can see there, it says, and is essential to the case, the issue in this case, the owner of a hereditement of land is the person entitled to possession of it. And, Lord, our case court is that the owner falls foul of the Ramsay doctrine as it is stated in UBS. And we also wish to put a preliminary argument in relation to what is meant by person entitled in possession. And, Lord, it's interesting that the draftman there, and it's historically so, talks about a person entitled to possession. It doesn't talk about a person entitled to an interest in land or a person owning land. It talks about a person entitled in possession. And, Lord, one submission which we'll be making when we get to the Brown case is that these leases did not confer, in the manner in which they were dealt with, did not confer possession on the leasit, the SPV. The basis of that, and if I may just quickly go to the basis of that submission, which is this, is that, as we know, and as I will show, my lord, no rent was paid, no occupation taken, no part performance, nothing was done. None of the stipulations were met, all kinds of stipulations met by landlord and tenant. Nothing was done. All that was done was that the piece of paper was signed by the relevant officers of the company. And, Lord, one point which will come when we go to the leases is, of course, that there are rental obligations in the leases which have in terms of what is said in the leases, is that quiet possession, for instance, will only be given if the rent is paid. And neither the rent nor, in one case, the premium was paid nor anything else. And that is freely admitted in the defence in the Hurstwood case. So, my lord, we're that is a point which wasn't ventilated by us below, though we are forced to be said that the leases, though valid in law, having the three essential elements of a lease, that the covenants were not to be taken in terms of Ramsay of being of any effect. And, but this is a somewhat different point, but on the same basis that we say that if you look at Brown and you look at the following decision of Mr. Justice Carr, if they stopped in case, that possession wasn't handed up. And in fact, what happened, in effect, after the leases were signed, was that for rating purposes, there was a sort of limbo. And we say that in that limbo, it is the head leaseholder or the freeholder, the landlord, who is in fact the person to whom the 1988 Act addresses, because they are in effect and in law in possession, because they have the immediate legal right. And that the new legal right, which they purportedly created by the leases, is of no effect unless and until the rent is paid or is part performance, or the leases in some way become active, they become active in respect of those, active in law in respect of those leases. But just signing a bit of paper and not undertaking the payment of the rent or any of the stipulations in the leases on either side is insufficient to give them possession. That is the argument by parity of reasoning with Brown. And, Lord, we say that in those circumstances, the liability is that of the landlords. Now, Lord, we fully accept that we do not have direct authority in case law to support that. But we do say that that is the logical conclusion that one must come to when one makes a careful assessment of what the learned judge said in Brown and what was said, Lord, by Mr. Justice Carr in the Stockport and Coogee Lloyd case. But I will come to that, of course, in detail. But I thought it might be useful at this stage overall, a view of the argument being put collaterally to the argument that that the SPVs were not owners in the Ramsay sense in 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 the leases. Lord, just to finish this statutory survey, if I may, Lord, just in a slight, this is just so we don't have to go through it again when we come to Prest argument, Lord. If we go from there to page 469. And order to page 469, we have the definition of a chargeable financial year, as your lordship can see. And subsection 1 says, chargeable financial years financial years beginning in 1990. Subsection 2, transitional years of financial years beginning in 1990, 91, 92 and 93, first transitional years, 1990. And then finally, my lord, the important point is that subsection 3, a financial year is a period of 12 months, beginning with the 1st of April. And indeed, the obligation to make lists and so on, Lord, is all hinges, as we will see just at the moment in the regulations, around the financial year beginning on the 1st of April. And indeed, the obligation to pay by instalment is tailored to the financial year. And if there's a failure to pay instalments, there is a right under the regulations for the local authorities to say the whole amount of the NDR becomes payable. So that is all tied to a chargeable financial year. Lord, the regulations, which I promise not to go into in great detail, are found, Lord, at at page 478. And these are the Non-Domestic Rating Collection and Enforcement Local Lists Regulations. And it's one just to take a precision, one goes to regulation 4, that gives the right to make, the duty, rather, to make written demands for NDR and make various proper aspects of that duty. And then subsection, then regulation 5 deals with the service of written demand. And your lordship will see that in that the service demands, that a demand notice shall be served as soon as practicable, except in a case falling with subsection B, 1st of April in the relevant year. So it's certainly being looked upon there, as it is, as a a chargeable financial year obligation. And then, my lord, go on to regulation 6, which is at page 484. And then this deals with demands under the, payments under the demand notices. And that looks forward to the chargeable financial year, as your lordship says, demand notice is issued before or during the relevant year. That's obviously a chargeable financial year. And, Lord, we then go to regulation 7, that deals with payments by instalments, which is at page 486 to 489. And those regulations, one can see, are meant, well, they're not mentioned in terms, but the payment of instalments mentioned for one of the properties we're concerned with here, which is the unit 5 of the South Langs industrial estate, which is at EF 281, 283 and 285. There are forms of notices which are set out there. We won't go to, now, my lord, I don't think advances this particular part of the argument. And then, Lord, regulation 8 deals with if instalments are unpaid, when the whole becomes due. If the instalments are unpaid, then there is a liability, if the whole of mine, for the chargeable financial year. And the regulation 9, which is at page 497. Lord, that ensures that if unpaid instalments have meant the whole lot came payable in chargeable financial year, that at the end of the year, there's an adjustment of the demand, if, for instance, some day the ratepayer wasn't entitled, wasn't an owner within the legislation. So, Lord, that is my brief survey of the, well, I hope it's brief, but this, the survey of the statutory provisions, my lord. And in my submission, in our submission, what that survey demonstrates, a structure which is clearly dependent on a chargeable financial year and a computation basis, which goes to the days in which the owner is the owner and is liable.
Lord Briggs.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Matthew, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, my lord.
Are you going to show us the provision for exemption for companies in liquidation?
Certainly, my lord. That is in page 501. And, your lordship, my lord, I just please, the type on. Lord, if you look down, Lord, you'll see that the relevant non-domestic hereditments described in this regulation are any herediments. That's those that are not prescribed for the purposes of section 45 1D. If you go down, Lord, you'll see at K, whose owner is a company which is subject to a winding up order made under the Insolvency Act 1986, or which is being wound up voluntarily under that act.
Yes, to understand how this works, I think the starting point is section 45 1D of the 1988 Act, which imposes liability on a day when the hereditement falls within a class prescribed by regulations. And then, in the regulations you've just taken us to, regulation 3 prescribes for that purpose all hereditiments other than the ones listed in regulation 4.
Yes, my lord.
Yeah. So the the exemption applies under K on the basis that the owner of the land, the owner of a hereditement, is a company subject to a winding up order?
Yes, my lord.
And it's the same definition of owner as a person entitled to possession, is it?
Yes, my lord. And, my lord, of course, it is by showing themselves within K that the assertion is made that no NDR is payable in the MVL cases, the members voluntarily winding up cases. And that is the Wigan and Property Alliance Group cases in this appeal. Whereas the Rossendale and Hurstwood cases, my lord, primarily ace recruitment, nor the strike-off case under the Companies Act 2006.
Mr. Matthew, are there any travaux preparatoires which help one to understand why Parliament might have thought that a company in solvent liquidation, either had not run out of its money, would be entitled to a
My lord, I can't hear, your lordship.
I'm afraid we lost the second part of your question, Lord Briggs.
While Lord Briggs is reconnecting, I think what he was asking was what was whether a company which was in solvent liquidation, why it was to be within this exemption? And he was asking whether travaux preparatoires gave an indication as to the purpose?
No, my lord. So far as our inquiries have gone, we have found nothing to indicate what the policy would be in that regard. And my learned friend's case gives some historical material on the development of the rating system.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Lord Briggs, I don't know where you can hear me now with the telephone, but I
I've got the telephone on, I didn't hear your answer. And I'm very sorry that the appalling signal I'm suffering from interrupted it.
No, my lord, as I said, we have not found anything from any preparatory work which would be of any assistance.
Thank you.
Whether is. Lord, is it convenient that I should continue?
Yes, please.
Lord, the the nature of the possession, if we can put it that way, may be conveniently found in the documents which are within the case for each of these companies, my lord. If I may, come to the pieces and the other documents, once having looked at the case of Brown, upon which the respondents have founded their case, my lord. And it's found, my lord, at page five five four of the bundle. In that case, my lord, if I may just read the short headnote. Rating, ratable occupation receivers, receivers of companies' property appointed by the venture holder as company's agent, company's property consisting of unoccupied office, whether receivers entitled to possession, whether liable to pay non-domestic occupied property rate, discretion to delay permanently company's liability of rates, whether rates payable for as expense of receipt of ship and then the relative various statute provisions. And, my lord, the, one of the, in the venture, one of the essential clauses which were concerned in this case is clause fourteen oh four, which we see mentioned in the long headnote at bottom page five oh four. Then turns over, lord, and one can see that the essential nature of of clause fourteen oh four is that the venture empowered the receiver to take possession of charged property and to exercise any of those powers on behalf of or in the name of the company or on his own. And clause fourteen oh six, he directed that all monies provided received by any receiver appointed were to be applied, if they got back with remuneration, testified in the law of property. Clause fourteen oh seven, if I'm just running ahead, my lord, provided a receiver was deemed to be the agent of the company. And then it goes into fact on the twenty first of November nineteen ninety three, at least of the public, the less he delivered possession, delivered our possession to the company acting by their receivers. And for rating purposes, property had been unoccupied about July nineteen ninety three, when the less he had gone out of occupation for rating purposes. Transfers the relevant rating authority of purchase of the receivers liable to pay any non-domestic rate twenty first of November nineteen ninety three, twenty first month five, receivers and the transfer paid in that direction. And then, if I may read the short headnote, on the question whether the receivers were entitled to possession purposes, part one of the Land Act nineteen eighty eight, the receivers were under an obligation to pay the rate by purchase. Clause fourteen oh six, the defense, and section one at nine, page of the nineteen eighty eight Act, rate direct, the court should direct receivers to pay the rate otherwise they are liable to cause unfortunate trading.
And. Mr. Matthew, Mr. Matthew, I wonder if I could interrupt just for a moment? We are able to follow you because we have the text in front of us. But your voice, I'm afraid, is breaking up so badly that I think any member of the public who is watching this would not be able to follow what you're saying. I think we'd better take a moment or two for our IT engineer, Mr. Scheck, to get in touch with you and see if we can't improve the.
I'm sorry, my lord.
So we'll adjourn just for as long as it takes. I imagine it will just be a matter of a few minutes to see if we can't improve your sound quality.
I'm sorry, my lord, certainly.
Yes, Mr. Matthew, I think we're ready now to resume.
Thank you, my lord. Lord, I just was reading from page five 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 of the Brown case. And about what under held firstly, or one in brackets, the it says that the general provincial principle of rating law, that the possession of an agent tended to entitlement to possession under section sixty five one of the Act nineteen eighty eight. And that receivers, having been appointed agent under the terms of that, were not by reason only of that appointment entitled to possession and thus were not owners for the unoccupied property rate. That the receiver's power under clause fourteen oh four in the diventure to act on his own behalf had no effect until that power was exercised. That immediately entitled to it. And the mere fact that the receivers could have displaced the possession of the company, exercised their power under the diventure was not enough to make them owner per one, the calling of the receiver not necessarily liable for the rate. And, my lord, secondly, that the failure of an administrative receiver to pay rental rates in respect to property acquired by the company prior to the receipt of it was not unfair or unjust conduct per se, that they were not required at the mass of public policy to exercise their discretion under section one oh nine eight of the Act nineteen twenty five in favour of that. Lord, I think anything else of terms there. I was going to take your lordship to the counsel's submission, which is our page five six one, the beginning. And there we have, we will have Gloucester's submission. And am I clear on that?
It's not ideal, but we're following you.
Well, we could plug in a microphone here, my lord, if that would assist, I hope. It would take a couple of minutes to see whether it would work. Would that be better, my lord?
Well, you're perfect at the moment. I think, I think, I think it's simply if a microphone on your laptop isn't picking you up very well if you turn your head to the side.
Well, I've got both laptops placed together.
I appreciate the difficulty with documents.
Yes, I'm sorry, my lord, I just have them in. But, lord, we had, hopefully, we'll try something drawing a shorter German. But, lord, this is, I'm at page five six one. And, lord, this is the submissions to Miss Gloucester as counsel. And the, as you can see, my lord, the issue, issue one, learned judge Arden J. There's the counsel's primary submission was that steers the person entitled for the possession of properties for the purpose of section sixty five. And then she goes on to look at analysis in the case of Ratford. My lord, the the next, if we go over the pay, the Ratford cases, the citation begins, Lord Justice Slade, at the bottom, page five six one. And the mere fact that a receiver has entered on a company's premises for the purpose of managing and carrying out its business does not necessarily mean that the company has been dispossessed or steered by the premise rating purposes. It's shown that a change of ratable occupation occurred. We're going to go over the pay. And the conclusion must be derived from the terms of the receiver's appointment and from what he has actually done. And that the practical element there. And, my lord, one goes down to see on that page with paragraph beginning. In my judgment, however, the receivers, by face it, discharged the burden of showing that they had been appointed on terms, though empowering them to take possession of the company's premises, to carry on and manage business, not such possession and further provided that in carrying out their activities, they should be deemed to be agent of the company. This much has been said. And the owner, in my opinion, has shifted the counsel to the receivers because that's the company. Lord, there's much to be gained from the rest of that passage. And one goes over page five six four. On page five six four, at the letter E, Miss Gloucester's submission is ending. And the recital of it, it says accordingly, while receivers can be occupiers, normally they will be an occupation's agent of the ship. This is not sufficient to make them occupiers for rating purposes. And, lord, we go from there to the learned judge's finding at page five six. Lord, she gives her conclusion on the first issue. And she says, I do not need to define possession because the issue is not whether the receivers and the companies had possession, but whether after the appointment of the receivers, entitlement to the possession of the properties, subject to the rights of BP, the companies had previous had, now vested in receivers, is not that receivers had by their actual agency company. The issue turns on the efficacy of the agent, clause fourteen oh seven of the bin. And then she goes on to see whether what the standing of Ratford against the North District High School and Bannister against Islington are. I don't think we're concerned with that, that when she says that they have the Bannister case, I read that represents Parcher and she thinks of Ratford. And she goes on and then says, she says, I hope, this is just about the letter G, my lord, I hope that the receiver is not by reason of his appointment such liable for unoccupied property where he is appointed on the date of the company. Fact that he has power to act on his own behalf, clause fourteen oh P, has no effect, even if such provision has the meaning for which the loser would contend until he exercises that power, but not that the receiver has in fact been exercising that company. And she, I'm sorry, my lord, I was reading.
Sorry for interrupt, Mr.
I'm sorry, my lord.
I just wanted to express the hope that before you run out of time, you might actually make some submissions to us on the Ramsey issue. I'm not, I'm not sure whether you've got any concept of the time allotted, but you're like a bowler with a very long run up. And so far, I haven't actually seen who'd make a delivery.
My lord, I'm going to go straight to that now, my lord. If I may just deal with the final paragraph here, my lord. Lord, there is an alternative approach, which leads the same conclusion, as there cannot in general be at least two persons in different capacities in possession at the same time. It must follow, as Miss Gloucester submitted, that the person is entitled to possession for the purposes of section sixty five one, only if he has immediately entitled to possession. It's not enough the person has a right, which if exercised, would result in his having possession. And we say that here they have exercised their right at all because they have done absolutely nothing in respect of those leases. Lord, going to Brown, my lord, we do not say that, as has been suggested by the respondents, that we're attempting to produce an alternative juristic definition of owner for the purpose of the NDR legislation. Our submission is that it is perfectly proper in terms of Ramsey to 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 conclude the word owner in light of the primary fact. And, my lord, that we have given our written reasons for the, the application of the purpose and, my lord, this is a typical situation in terms of Ramsey, where the the word perfect, perfectly well can encompass a genuine and the word can perfectly well encompass the genuine occupation by most ratepayers as owners. And, my lord, there's not any question here that there has been a genuine act of possession. And, my lord, the word possession, as is shown by the Brown case and by the Stockton against Lloyd Punji, is the word possession must be interpreted thoroughly, proper and practical, which reflects the situation which the documents purport to provide. The situation, of course, is nothing to do with the documents any more than, as we have submitted, the conditions for the shares in UBS or indeed the description of this share capital in Arrowfield and otherwise. And there is nothing to restrain the court to a literal interpretation suggested by the respondents. The fact is that this word in a taxing statute is looking at the substantive relationship, let me put it that way, between the taxpayer and the charging authority. And the substantive relationship does not bear a a critical analysis once the facts are accepted. And those facts are accepted, my lord, because, as your lordship will have seen in the defence, lord, it is, it is accepted and admitted that the, the rent was not to be paid and never was paid. And, lord, furthermore, further than that, lord, if one goes to, for instance, page three seven eight, one can see there that the possession of the premises in the ACE case was the part possession of the premises in the ACE case is dependent upon the rent being paid. And the rent, of course, never was paid. And there was a similar provision in the Wigan case in the Property Alliance case. And so we've got a position where the leases, though they have all the formal ingredients of commercial leases, minus some took some of the more essential and the rights of re-entry being particularly a peremptory, one of twenty days or so. We have a position where reached where the conditions which purport to provide for possession simply are not in any way of any influence in the arrangements which the respondents have made. And that being so, given the purpose and the weight of, of, of the statutory machinery, And that being so, given the, the purpose and the weight of, of, of the statutory machinery, that it is not proper to take the literal approach, which is what is being urged upon your lordship by the respondents, and that our, our case, and of course, it says, under the heading, the, Lord, sorry, find it in, in, on the Ramsey issue, our case purposes of literal interpretation of a tax statute, and then goes on.
You, you, you say that you shouldn't take a literal approach, but if, if the statutory requirement is an entitlement to possession, then if you're right that the lease operates in a way that there was no entitlement to possession, absent the payment of rent, then don't you win on the literal words of the statute? Why do you need Ramsey?
Well, that was really where I started off, my lord, saying that actually they never did obtain possession, which was, if one might say, outside the scope of Ramsey, that submission. And I move, quite rightly being prompted by Lord Leggett, onto the Ramsey submissions.
But, but you're playing in aid the same qualities in the lease.
Yes, I am, my lord, and I'm saying in terms of Ramsey and in terms of my primary, my first submission, that the covenants, which are not essential to a lease, the three elements of a lease are certainly present, that the covenants have, cannot be given any meaning if they have not even remotely been performed.
Yes.
Mr. Matthew, it's Lord Briggs here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, my lord.
If you're right about clause three of the lease, which leaving aside the curest spelling in the heading, is a fairly familiar clause, does it mean that under the rating legislation, the rates burden is thrown on the landlord every time the tenant becomes in arrears worth his rent, or that it falls on no one because neither the tenant nor the landlord has an entitlement to possession?
No, my lord, it doesn't mean that, because what will happen in a normal case is that the rent would have been paid, and in practical and in financial terms, the tenant would have entered into possession, and therefore the lease is operable, the covenants in the lease are operable, whereas in this case, the covenants in the lease are not operable because they have never been activated, if I may put it that way.
Lord Leggett. Doesn't this argument amount to an argument that the lease is a sham? Because if it, if it, and it doesn't create any effective rights and obligations, because if it is, if it does create effective rights and obligations, the mere fact that the tenant hasn't paid the rent, it doesn't mean that the landlord is entitled, is entitled to possession, he still has to exercise his right to re-enter, isn't he?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part of your lordship.
The landlord, all that clause three does, if the lease is an effective lease and not a sham, is to say that the tenant is, remains not at risk of losing his entitlement to possession, provided he pays the rent, but it still has to be an act of the landlord to terminate the lease or re-enter the property.
Yes, my lord.
If it's a genuine lease, so aren't you really saying that the lease is a sham in this case?
Now, we cannot at this stage, my lord, before having a proper disclosure, make allegation of sham, my lord, and that, of course, has been struck ice, and so we're bound to put our case on the basis that the lease, in effect, is hollow, is, is, is the lease in effect, my lord, is, is a Trojan horse, and it's not a real, it's not a real beast at all, and that what we have here is demonstrably a failure to take possession because they haven't fulfilled one of the constituent rights. They still have a lease, and presumably the landlord could seek specific performance of the lease, but the landlord has held back from doing that, which is, or it must be assumed has held back from doing that on the facts that we have, because the landlord and the SPV are, have one object in view, which is the same. And, Lord, in the, Lord, there's a similar provision in, in the, in the other lease as well, my unit was pointing out to you, but the simple issue is whether, I, I think, my lord, when one looks at Brian, one sees there, what the judge is concerned about is that there is some practical demonstration of possession, that is to say, either law in the paying of the rent or whatever, or as far as the receivers goes, it is the demonstration by actually taking possession and being seen to act in right of their, their powers in the debenture. But this is something completely different. There is no attempt on either party to do anything. And, my lord, it doesn't necessarily say that it's deceitful in the sense of sham, it's just that they have provided a structure or matrix for, to which they say they comply with their statutory obligations, which they transparently do not.
I'm afraid, Mr. Matthew, you are running out of time for your submissions on the Ramsey aspects of the case, although no doubt we may pursue the, the matter with, with Mr. Prosser in due course.
Yes, my lord, I'm conscious, my lord, I'm afraid I lost sight of the, of time. Lord Dunn, the, I would just recommend to your lordships to, 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 to read the, the lease itself, which is the page i- in the Rosendale Hurstwood case, which is the strike-off case, at page three, seven, one, and your lordships will see that, contrary to what is said in the SFI, that a commercial rent is said to be payable seven thousand a year and seven hundred pound premium, so it all looks extremely serious and commercial, but it, it simply isn't so, as is admitted, and similarly, the fifty thousand pound rent in the Wigan case, and those provisions are what was presented in the letters of the council as being what the arrangements were between the parties, and those arrangements, and that's found in the letters, my lord, to the council at page three hundred and ninety, and, my lord, those, the, the, the council had to make investigation in order to find out what the position was, and that of itself demonstrates something about the manner of this being put together, not to say that it is a deceit. And, Lord, I suspect I have run out of time, my lord, I'm.
Very well then, oh, thank you, Mr. Matthew. We'd better turn then to Mr. Prosser.
Thank you. May I begin by addressing this new point, which Mr. Matthew accepts is not a Ramsey point at all. It nowhere appears in his grounds of appeal, it's not in his written case, he doesn't refer to the leases in his written case, this is a point which he makes for the first time this morning, and in my submission, irrespective of the merits of the point, he should not be allowed to make it. I was expecting to address a Ramsey argument, not an argument on landlord and tenant law, but if need be, I will address it because in my submission, it's a total non-point. Because there's no doubt if one looks at the leases, and I can take your lordships to it if necessary, there is a clause in the leases whereby the term of the lease begins on a particular date, and on that date, an estate in land was granted to the tenant, and therefore the tenant, the less E, had the entitlement to possession. Then one goes to the clauses of the lease, which is a contractual matter, are nothing to the point, so that, for example, the clause that Mr. Matthew relies upon, which says that on condition of payment of rent, the tenant shall have quiet enjoyment, is a contractual clause, but doesn't cut away, as it were, the estate in land which has already been granted, and therefore the question of entitlement to possession in my submission is a, is a non-issue, and it's not surprising that it's not an issue which has been raised by Mr. Matthew hitherto, until this morning. So unless you ask me to do so, I'm going to focus on the Ramsey argument, if I may.
Yes.
Yes, carry on, Sir Prosser.
Can you hear us? Lord Briggs here.
Yes.
Mr. Prosser, you presumably say, looking at clause three point one, that a covenant for quiet enjoyment is simply that the landlord promises not to interfere with the tenant's property right of, of entitlement to possession, and makes himself responsible for anybody claiming under him who tries to do so in the alternative.
Exactly, my lord, but it tells you nothing about the prior question of whether the landlord has granted the tenant an estate in land, which he has done under the redendum.
Yeah.
If one goes back to the clause one, the demise, on page three, seven, four, to hold under the tenant for the term, and then the term is in, in turn defined on page three, seven, two, as the period of two years from and including a particular date, so the term has begun, and then the landlord, as, as Lord Briggs says, makes a promise that if the tenant fulfills his promise of paying the rent, then he won't interfere with the estate in land, as it were, that he's already granted. So the question of entitlement to possession is dealt with by the estate in land, and not by the happenstance of whether or not the tenant pays rent from time to time. And as was, as I think it was Lord Leggett, maybe it was Lord Briggs, I do apologize, it cannot be that the definition in section sixty five has the result that entitlement to possession passes from landlord to tenant, depending on whether or not the rent is paid, that, that, that can't be the position. So I'm assuming, my lords, that I've dealt with that, that new legal point, and that I can then go on and address, if I may, the Ramsey point, and in terms of the legislation, Mr. Matthew took you to the legislation, and he focused on this concept of the chargeable financial year. What he didn't really focus on was another concept, which is a very important one, which is that of the chargeable day, and that if one goes to, first of all, section forty three, because that's the provision dealing with liability to rates where the hereditment is occupied, that's on page four, two, nine, in the bundle of authorities. And section forty three tells you in subsection one, that the person, the ratepayer, is subject to this rate in respect of the chargeable financial year, if the following conditions are fulfilled in respect of any day in the year, and then little A is that he's in occupation and so on, and then subsection two, in such a case, the ratepayer shall be liable, so that's the liability provision, to pay an amount calculated by finding the chargeable amount, we're not really interested in the amount, but that's subsection four, for each chargeable day, and then aggregating those amounts, and subsection three tells us what a chargeable day is, it's one which falls within the financial year and in respect of which the conditions mentioned in subsection one above are fulfilled, one A, of course, being that he's in occupation on that day. So one has to look at it on a day-to-day basis and ask interalia, is the person who is said to be liable in occupation of the hereditment on that day? Now, that's the position for section forty three, and it's exactly the same for the purposes of our section, section forty five, which is on page four, four, four. We have exactly the same structure in section forty five, that we're told in subsection one, that a person is subject to the rate if the following conditions are fulfilled in respect of any day in the year, and now subsection one A is that on the day, none of the hereditment is occupied, but then B, on the day, the ratepayer is the owner of the whole of the hereditment, and obviously that's the definition in section sixty five of owner, and then we go to subsection two, in such a case, the ratepayer shall be liable to pay an amount calculated by, well, it's the same as we've seen for subsection, section forty three, finding the chargeable amount for each chargeable day and aggregating the amounts, and again, we're told in subsection three what a chargeable day is, it's a day in respect of which the conditions are fulfilled, so that we've got, again, a series of chargeable days or a series of days which either are or are not chargeable. If you're not the owner on a particular day, then that isn't a chargeable day in relation to you, and there is no rate payable by you in respect of that day or for that day. So that if on the first of April, that being the first day of a chargeable year, financial year, you are a freeholder, let's say, and you haven't granted a lease, and this is an unoccupied hereditment, then you are liable in respect of that day, day one, the first of April. But if you then grant a lease to somebody else, a valid subsisting lease of that hereditment, which takes effect from day two, then it isn't a chargeable, day two isn't a chargeable day in relation to you, the freeholder, it's a chargeable day in relation to the leaseholder because he is the person who is the owner. And therefore, it's, it's vital in my submission to the understanding of these provisions, particularly when we come on to the pressed question of what an existing liability is, that one sees that liability to rates, whether under section forty three or forty five, arises from day to day, and that was a point which was made by Lord Newburger in the Nortel case, if I could just give you the reference, I don't need to take you to it because it was really an aside on his part, it's page electronic file eight, two, one, that's where the case begins, it's paragraph one hundred and three in that case, at EF eight, five, six, where Lord Newburger said that liability to rates arises from day to day, and there's another case where Lord Justice Lewison, in a case called Jervis and Pillard Denton, that's in tab ten of the bundle of authorities, and it's at page six, seven, three of the electronic file, paragraph seventy four of the judgment, where he pointed out, and obviously agreed with Lord Newburger, that liability for rates arises from day to day, and said, although the position was different in the nineteenth century. So that's what is meant by saying liability to rates arises from day to day, that one has looked, to look at the position on each day and ask, is that a chargeable day in relation to this particular person, the ratepayer? And just for good measure, Lord Justice David Richards in the court below made the same point, this is in the, in the core volume, tab seven, is the judgment in the Court of Appeal below, it's page, page one, seven, eight of the electronic file, and it's paragraph thirty nine of the judgment, where Lord Justice David Richards says that liability for NDR accrues on a day-by-day basis, and then he, he gave an example, if I can take you to paragraph forty one, in that case, it's, it's page one, seven, eight in the electronic He says the liability for NDR arose day by day, and if a defendant was the owner as defined on day two as well as day one, it became liable for the NDR on day two, but that was not a continuation of a liability that arose on day one, it was a new liability. Now, clearly, Lord Justice David Richards was not forgetting that if days one and two are in the same financial year, of course, there was an existing liability for that financial year in relation to day one, he wasn't forgetting that. What he was saying was that if the conditions necessary for liability on day two are not satisfied, that you're not the owner on day two, then you have a liability for day one, you don't have a liability for day two. If you are the owner on day two, then that is an additional, a further liability, in addition to your pre-existing liability for day one, so that as each day in the financial year goes by, and the conditions are satisfied, if they are satisfied, then you have additional or further liabilities, and that's important in my submission to bear in mind when we consider this concept of existing liability in the pressed case, and obviously I'll, I'll pick that point up if I may when we get there, perhaps this afternoon. The only other thing I wanted to take you to in terms of the legislation, if I may, is to go back to is to go back to those regulations which include Regulation 4K. Do you remember the exception for a company in winding up? Which is in tab 3 of the primary, the volume 1 of the authorities bundle. And it's the electronic file, page 501. Because I wanted to show you one of the other exceptions, not the one in K. And perhaps I could explain, I too am not aware of the legislative thinking, as it were, behind the introduction of exception K for a company insolvent winding up. I'm afraid I can't help you there. In relation to another one, which is C, exception C, which says whose owner is prohibited by law from occupying it or allowing it to be occupied. I'm going to refer to that now, because I submit that the existence of that exception is inconsistent with a commercial or economic concept of entitlement to possession. And I'll obviously expand on that submission, but the idea of a person who, although is ex-hypothecy the owner of a hereditment, in other words, he's entitled to possession of it, but he's prohibited by law either from occupying it himself or by allowing anybody else to occupy it, he's nevertheless the owner. And in my submission, that is inconsistent with the concept of the owner being someone with some sort of commercial or economic entitlement.
There must be a vast number of hereditments which allow to non-domestic rates, but which are not occupied for commercial purposes.
Yes, and that was the next point. Thank you very much, my lord. That was the next point I was going to make, which is the definition, and perhaps I should have made this point earlier on, the definition of a non-domestic hereditment. Because if one goes back to section 42, 42 of the 1988 Act, so it's in the main volume 1 of the authorities, electronic file page 424. One of the conditions in relation to the list is that the hereditment must be what's called a relevant non-domestic hereditment. And a non-domestic hereditment is defined in section 64, which is on electronic file page 453. Subsection 8 of section 64, on page 453, a hereditment is non-domestic if either it consists entirely of property which is not domestic, or it's a composite hereditment, don't worry about that. But basically, it's non-domestic if it consists of property which is not domestic. And then we're told in section 66 what a domestic property is. That's on page 458. So in fact, we're told what a property which is domestic is. It's used wholly for the purposes of living accommodation, or it's a yard, garden and so on, enjoyed with property within A, or it's a private garage, or it's private storage premises. So if you're not within any of those provisions, then it's a non-domestic hereditment. But that is much wider in my submission than premises which are suitable for commercial or business use. It could be, for example, a members' club, or some sort of room that's used for charitable purposes, but nothing to do with a business. So the concept we're looking at is a very wide one, and nothing to do with a commercial or economic position. We haven't seen section 65A, perhaps I could take you to that, which is on page 456. And that's the Crown property. And subsection 1 says this part, that's part 3, which is all to do with non-domestic rating, applies to the Crown as it applies to other persons. And subsection 2 says accordingly, liability to a non-domestic rate is not affected by the fact that the hereditment is occupied by the Crown, or the Crown is the owner, B, the Crown is the owner of the hereditment. So that that's the basis of the schemes in the Hurstwood litigation, where rather than relying on the winding up exception, the Hurstwood SPVs were dissolved on the basis that their leases would then pass as bono de cantia to the Crown or similar, and the Crown would then take over the liability. Now.
Mr. Professor, it's Lord Briggs here. Can I just ask you about that?
Yes.
I think I'm right in saying, I'm sure, that the Crown and/or one of the other duchies could, if they wanted to, disclaim on its property passing to them as bono de cantia.
Yes.
Why doesn't the local authority on the evening before the dissolution takes effect simply ring up the relevant Crown or Duchy Department and say, could you disclaim this onerous rate-paying liability when it lands on your breakfast table tomorrow morning?
I'm sure that would be a good idea. I think the practical problem is local authorities have a practical difficulty of keeping up to date with what people are doing from time to time. Now, now make it clear.
The scheme relies, if you like, on administrative inertia, rather than being
It does.
Rather than being proof against disclaimer.
Absolutely, it does. Likewise, the PAG scheme relies on a very slow winding up procedure, which has been challenged in other litigation to do with it being contrary to the the insolvency laws, or contrary to the public interest in relying upon that sort of winding up. But the point I would like to make is, I'm not representing the SPVs. I'm not interested in whether the schemes worked or not, because I'm acting for the respondents who granted the leases. And my case is simply that the effect of granting the leases was to pass entitlement to possession to the SPVs, and to deprive the, my clients, the respondents, of entitlement to possession. And then I stop. I don't need to go on any further.
Didn't the respondents set up the scheme?
Well, it's certainly an assumed fact for the purposes of today.
Let's assume that they did, and let's assume at the moment that for some reason the insolvency process wasn't sufficient to exempt the SPVs of the liability. Would not the directors of the SPVs be at least potentially on risk of wrongful trading by accepting the onerous lease which created the rates liability, liable to disqualification, and banging on the respondent's door for some sort of redress of having got them into that situation by putting the SPV into the scheme?
That might be the position in relation to some of the arrangements, I believe, I might be, I may be corrected, that some of the schemes had a provision which made sure that the SPVs were not in that position. That was certainly a later version of the schemes. I mean, I'm reminded, well, of course, the thinking behind the schemes, obviously, is that the exception will apply, and therefore, there isn't any risk of wrongful trading. But if that will prove to be incorrect, and that's the question I'm being asked, I think, then that may be the position. But certainly, the SPVs are not party to these proceedings, and the whole question of the application or otherwise of the exception or section 65A and so on, I would submit, simply doesn't arise. The question is a much more limited one, which is is the grant of a lease, which is a valid lease, effective to mean that my clients, the respondents, are not entitled to possession? Or, and this is the Ramsey argument, if that lease has been granted purely for the purposes of avoidance of NDR, does that mean that that lease is not effective? And if one focuses on that Ramsey, that question, it's being put by the appellants, that the Ramsey principle, or the Ramsey approach, enables one to conclude that the leases were not, despite being valid, effective to ensure that the respondents were not the owners, were not entitled to possession. So if I can address that, if I can address that straight away, I'm sure it's common ground, it's certainly very clear from the authorities, that the Ramsey approach is just that, an approach, not a rule. It's based on a recognition that taxes are generally imposed, and tax relief is generally given by reference to economic transactions, what are sometimes called real-world activities. But not always, and that is a point that Lord Reed makes in the UBS case. Not always. So one always has to look at the terms of the particular statute to see if it's of that sort of character, where the relevant provisions are referring to a transaction, an economic transaction or a real-world activity. In the UBS case itself, the answer was, the legislation section 423 of the 2003 Act was of that character. It was all about acquiring shares, subject to a forfeiture provision, and relying on an exception or an exemption from liability because they were subject to a forfeiture provision. And the forfeiture, the relevant provision of the statute referred to a contract, agreement, or other arrangement which makes provision under which there will be a forfeiture. And the Supreme Court construed those statutory words, a contract, agreement, or other arrangement which makes provision and so on, as referring to a contract and so on entered into for commercial purposes, rather than purely for tax avoidance purposes.
It helped in that case that the provision in question was actually an anti-avoidance provision.
It was, it was. And so one sees that the taxpayer is relying upon an exemption, a tax exemption, but he's pointing out that, he's saying that he's entered into a particular transaction which qualifies under the Act. But the words used in the statute, contract, agreement, arrangement, are sufficiently broad as to allow one to say they are amenable to the Ramsey approach, under which one tends to assume that this sort of language is referring to a real-world activity, rather than one created for tax avoidance purposes only. But it all depends on the terms of the statute. Not all statutes are of that character. And my submission is that Section 65, or more generally, part 3 of the Act, is not of that character. And I'm going to divide that up into six very short reasons, if I may. The first one is just looking at the language, in other words, this is a linguistic point. The statutory language, section 65.1, is not referring to a transaction or an activity at all. So section 65 is on page 454. The owner of a hereditment or land is the person entitled to possession of it. That is not referring to a transaction or an activity at all. Instead, in my submission, it's invoking concepts of entitlement and of possession, which have an established legal meaning and recognized legal incidents under real property law. And that's the point that Mrs. Justice Arden was making in the Brown case that Mr. Matthew took you to. And I wanted to refer very briefly to a passage there, and I can do it, this is at tab 6. I don't need to take you to the head note. If one goes to page 567. So it's page 108.3 in the report, at the top of the page, where Mrs. Justice Arden accepts Miss Gloucester's submissions, 1.2. So if you go back to see what that submission was, this is on page 108.0 at F, and therefore, electronic file page 464. Sorry, 564. So opposite F, little 2, the definition of owner in section 65 refers to the person entitled to possession of the hereditment, and this requires one to identify the person who has the immediate legal right to actual physical possession, albeit that such person ex-hypothecy will not be in actual physical occupation of the property. That's it. So she accepted that submission, and therefore, she accepted that the concept of a person entitled to possession is a legal concept. It's a person with a legal right, the immediate legal right to actual physical possession. And by saying it's an immediate legal right, she was making the point that it's not enough that the person has a right which, if exercised, would result in them having possession or a right to possession. So that so, for example, if you have a landlord who grants a lease which is terminable at the will of the landlord, or indeed, which is due to terminate tomorrow, still, that landlord does not, on the day concerned, so one has to remember that here, we're considering the position on each day to ask whether it's a chargeable day. If the landlord has not terminated the lease, the fact that lease will terminate tomorrow is neither here nor there. He hasn't got an immediate legal right to possession. Likewise, if the landlord is also the sole shareholder of the tenant, which is a company, and therefore can wind up the company or procure a distribution of the lease at any time, that sort of legal power is irrelevant, because unless and until that power is exercised, the landlord does not have the immediate legal right to possession. So the part 3 of the 1988 Act is not interested in what might happen on a future date, or indeed, what will happen on a future date. It's interested in a position on a particular day. And one asks the question, therefore, on that day, is there a valid subsisting lease? That is the test which section 65, in effect, requires one to ask. And if the answer is yes, then it's the tenant who is the owner under the Act.
But, Professor, it's Lord Briggs again. I understand your submission that an entitlement to possession isn't on its face, expressly a reference to a transaction. But if you accept that the test, in fact, requires you to ask whether there's a valid subsisting lease, i.e. so that the freeholder isn't the owner, why doesn't it necessarily import consideration of whether the lease itself is there for any purpose other than pure tax avoidance?
Well, what one would have to say, then, is to imply, in my submission, to imply some words, which is to say, not simply is a person entitled to possession, but are they entitled to possession as part of a tax avoidance scheme? Now, if one did imply those words, first of all, my submission is, that would not be legitimate, that is not in section 65, and that would be to legislate rather than to construe. But that would get the appellants nowhere, because of course, it would mean that the SPVs in this case, you would say, if you implied those words, are not the owners. Because if one says entitled to possession and not simply for tax avoidance purposes, then I would accept that the SPVs are not the owners. But how does that help the appellants? Because the appellants want to say that the respondents are the owners. And therefore, it's not enough to construe the words entitled to possession as carrying with it a requirement of no tax avoidance. What the appellants need to say, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you immediately, but the argument, as I see it, is that it's a matter of construction. 65.1, if you look at it purposefully, it can't be intended to include an entitlement to possession that arises under a lease entered into with the intention that the lesssee would immediately be wound up and for the purpose of avoiding rates. So if you read that exception into section 55.1, then entitlement doesn't arise under that lease, and that throws you back on the person who is otherwise entitled, which is the owner, one who disregards the lease.
Well, in my submission, that is a very great deal of implication required to reach that result. Because you're not simply asking what sort of entitlement to possession does the, in this case, the SPV have, and one says it's an entitlement that arises out of a transaction where you're intending to wind it up and claim an exception. That can't be the sort of where you're intending to wind it up and claim an exception. That can't be the sort of entitlement that's required. I can see that. But obviously one's having to go further than that. And to say you fall back to somebody else, you don't automatically fall back. The test is whether you're entitled to possession. And the landlord of a subsisting lease is on no view entitled to possession. So one has to read in further words along the lines of, and also includes a person who would be entitled to possession but for a transaction entered into for tax avoidance purposes. That's what one would have to say. In my submission, that is to legislate, not to construe. That is not a legitimate interpretation of those words, a person entitled to possession, to include within it a person who is not entitled to possession, but would be on certain assumed, well, on certain, in certain circumstances. So that's my submission. It's not actually an argument which is expressly put by the appellants. But they certainly, they do say that one must disregard the leases. That's part of their Ramsey argument, that one must disregard the leases. But again, in my submission, that is not actually an exercise in statutory construction. That is not interpreting any words in section sixty five one. What it's doing is referring, relying on cases like UBS and so on, which certainly say that you can disregard something. But that's a consequence of an interpretation. So you disregard the contract in the UBS case, not because you say there's some rule somewhere which says you disregard contracts, but rather because the reference to a contract in the legislation in UBS can be interpreted as referring to a contract entered into for commercial purposes, and therefore the legislation may be described as disregarding other sorts of contracts, contracts entered into for tax avoidance purposes. But what are the words that one is seeking to construe here? In section sixty five, in my submission, there's simply no material to say we disregard the lease. The words entitled to possession are not referring to a lease. So one's not interested in what sort of lease is it that a person has, but even if one disregarded the lease, well, you've got to be able to say you disregard the lease so as to be able to say a person who's not entitled to possession should be treated as entitled because we've disregarded the lease. But all I can say is that is not an exercise in statutory construction in my submission. Bearing in mind, of course, that one's looking at this on a day-to-day basis, so that each day you have to ask, who is the person entitled to possession? So the question is clearly not, how did that person come to be entitled? One's not interested in the sort of history of how that entitlement came about. It's simply a question on each day, who is entitled? There is a case which Mr. Matthew relies upon, the Arrow Town case, that was all about an attempt to claim relief from stamp duty in respect of a sale of properties. And there was a relief available where properties were sold if the sale occurred between members of a group or associated companies. And in order to get within that exception or that exemption, the seller issued shares in a member of the group to the buyer. So that the buyer held shares which constituted ninety percent of the nominal share capital of a member of the selling group. And on that basis, it was claimed. The buyer became one of the associated companies and therefore the exemption was available. Now, this is a case in Hong Kong where Lord Millet was sitting, and what Lord Millet said was the concept of issued share capital in that case referred to share capital which has been issued. So in other words, it refers to a transaction, the issuing of the share capital. And he said that is amenable to a Ramsey interpretation. In other words, share capital which has been issued for a commercial purpose. So that was how it was held that that tax avoidance scheme didn't work. My submission is that that, there's no similar concept here where one can refer to the person entitled to possession as the person entitled for for commercial purposes, and then go on to say and includes a person who would be entitled but for the non-commercial entitlement of the person who's actually entitled. I'm repeating my submission that that is not an exercise of statutory construction. Now, importantly, my submission is that the, that's the linguistic point. But importantly, my submission is that this also gives full effect to the purpose of the legislation. That purpose was identified by Law Justice Lawton in a case called Hastings and Tarmac Properties, which is in tab nine of the authorities bundle, electronic file page four, six, two. And I'll just read what he said, if I may, because it's one sentence. He said, "The mischief with which," he's referring to the predecessor legislation, the nineteen sixty seven General Rate Act, intended to deal can be clearly identified. Parliament wanted to stop the owners of premises, leaving them unoccupied to suit their own convenience and their own financial advantage. That's why originally rating didn't extend to unoccupied properties, but it did in nineteen sixty six. And he's explaining the purpose of charging rates on unoccupied properties is to prevent people taking advantage from leaving them unoccupied. Now, bearing in mind that one is seeking to identify the owner on a particular day, if one asks, who is in a position to leave premises unoccupied on that day? The answer is, is the person with the immediate legal right to actual possession, physical possession on that day. So that, given the mischief, it's obvious why one defines the owner as the person entitled to possession with the immediate legal right to possession, because they're the person who's leaving it unoccupied. It's not the landlord who's leaving it unoccupied, it's the tenant who's under the valid lease. But the next point, which is more important still, is that it's no part of the purpose of section sixty five to deal with avoidance transactions. Because after all, if you apply the interpretation which I'm contending for, this juristic interpretation, the legal interpretation of entitlement to possession, then on every day, there will necessarily be a person entitled to possession, the owner who's liable for the rates, subject of course to any exemption or exception. So that section sixty five is always going to find someone who's the owner. And then the question is, which, whether someone can take successful advantage of an exemption or an exception. Well, that's what the SPVs are trying to do. So they are relying on an exception, in the case of the PAG schemes at any rate, or the operation of section sixty five A Crown Property in the case of the Hurstwood schemes. But that isn't relying upon some defect, some opportunity for avoidance in section sixty five. Section sixty five will always find someone who's on the face of it liable, and then it's some other provision that's being exploited. So my submission is there can be no justification for reading words into section sixty five, because the purpose of section sixty five is fulfilled fully by giving those words their purely legal interpretation, so that you can find someone who's the owner. And a quite separate question is whether that owner has got an exemption that he can rely upon. So of course, yes.
Surely you have to read the construed legislation as a whole. You can't just look at section sixty five as an isolated section. Ask yourself, well, is that concerned with avoidance? And if it isn't, well, just give it a literal interpretation. You've got to see how it fits into the scheme of the legislation. And to see whether it makes sense that Parliament intended somebody to be treated as an owner with the consequences that will ensue if the ownership arises, has been created simply in order to wind up the owner and avoid the payment of rates.
Well, my submission is, is that you can and should give section sixty five that literal legal interpretation. Because the objection surely to the company being wound up shortly afterwards is that the exception, the exception in the regulations doesn't apply. That is the short answer, which is that when, I think it's regulation four K, says the company is in winding up, one would read in the words, but not as part of tax avoidance arrangements. Now, that may be a perfectly acceptable interpretation, but that's the provision which one needs to focus on in my submission if you're going to say that these sort of arrangements don't work. But to try to do so at the section sixty five level in my submission is to, is not legitimate, because section sixty five works perfectly well. I accept, of course, you do have to look at this as a whole, but nevertheless, section sixty five works perfectly well in identifying who is the owner. That does not give rise to avoidance. It's another provision which does so, and it's that provision one should be focusing on in my submission. And so that Parliament does not, in my submission, and shouldn't be thought of as objecting to a shifting of liability from one person to another. So that if one grants a lease so that somebody else has got a liability to rating, the tenant has got a liability rather than the owner, that is not objectionable. I can see the objection is then relying on an exemption. But that is no part of the purpose of section sixty five. My next point, still on purpose of interpretation, is that the juristic meaning which I'm advancing is a clear, straightforward and certain test for identifying the person who's liable, subject to an exemption or so, for NDR. It thereby enables ratepayers and authorities alike to determine without difficulty who is liable. Of course, subject to any applicable exemption. So it's a straightforward and certain test. It's a legal test which everyone can operate on the basis that they have an understanding of real property law. But by contrast, in my submission, the interpretation which the appellants are advancing, which, if I quote from paragraph forty one of their written case at page ninety eight, they say it's obvious that the draftsman of section sixty five was concerned to identify, and I quote, "the person's genuine, real and commercial entitlement as owner." Genuine, real and commercial entitlement as owner. My submission is that if it's understandable at all, that concept is not clear or certain at all, and it's impossible to believe that the draftsman or Parliament intended ratepayers and rating authorities and the courts to have to struggle with the meaning of that interpretation in operating this legislation. First of all, what does genuine add to real? What do the final words as owner mean? What is the concept of commercial entitlement as opposed to legal entitlement? After all, if I've understood the appellants' argument correctly, they're not arguing that the test in section forty five is legal entitlement plus for commercial purposes. Because I've already submitted, that doesn't get them home here. They have to say that the reason why the respondents were the owners was because although they didn't have legal entitlement, they had commercial entitlement. That's their argument. That's their Ramsey argument. And for that purpose, what the appellants do is to say that one has to look at what they call circumstantial, relevant circumstantial facts. This is also a paragraph forty one of their written case at page ninety eight. They rely on a number of relevant circumstantial facts, and they say that the learned judge, and I think they're referring to Law Justice Henderson, failed to give proper weight to some of those relevant circumstantial facts. So in other words, what the appellants are saying is, in order to decide who has entitlement to possession within the meaning of section sixty five, one has got to weigh up a number of different facts and give them the correct weight to decide who has a commercial entitlement. And my submission is, leaving aside the factors that they rely on on whether they're relevant, that cannot have been intended, that there should be some sort of multi fact-sensitive, multifactorial exercise of weighing up different factors in order to decide who's the owner. So that's a wholly uncertain test. Yes.
On any view, though, in order to decide who's the owner, you have to look at history, don't you? You have to see, you have to look at what transactions have taken place in order for a chain of ownership to arise. And you might, for example, even on ordinary landlord and tenant law, have a document which it was uncertain whether it was a lease or a license. And the court would have to decide, wouldn't it, which it was in order to decide who was the owner?
Of course.
Why can't you have a process by which, when analyzing the document to see whether it gives rise to entitlement to possession, you treat as ineffective for that purpose a document created for the sole purpose and no other of avoiding rate paying?
Well, you could do that. That's a slightly different approach from what I was addressing in the appellate case. Right. Well, then I'm just going back, I suppose, to my previous remark in relation to that. You could do that. Then what you're asking the rating authorities and ratepayers to do is not simply to ask, to solve a legal test, which I accept, may on occasion throw up legal issues, yes, or factual issues. It isn't really a question of history in my submission. It's a question of whether, on the particular day, a particular person has the relevant legal status. Now, of course, he might have got that status because of the grant of a lease and so on, so. But in that sense, one may say history is involved. But what one's not interested in in my submission is for what purposes that status has arisen? Or a status has been granted to somebody else. It's a simple test in terms of, subject to legal niceties, in any event, it's a straightforward certain test. But if one builds into that qualification, but we disregard leases and other transactions entered into for tax avoidance purposes, first of all, that is creating a rule, I'm going back on myself again, going round again. That is creating a rule which is not there. But secondly, it is requiring local authorities and ratepayers alike to ask questions about the motivation for entering into transactions and having that legal status. And my submission is that creates enormous uncertainty. And I can evidence that, and I referred to this in my written case, that when the government in two thousand and fourteen asked rating authorities their reaction to the various tax avoidance schemes that were entered into, and what should be done about it. Some local authorities were reluctant that there should be a general anti-abuse rule, a sort of GAR, because they were concerned about the costs that they would have to incur in order to investigate for what purposes these transactions were entered into. In other words, rather than going to court and saying, here is the legal document, he's got the lease, or so on, they would also have to consider factual evidence about the purposes of transactions being entered into. Are we looking at main purpose? Are we looking at sole purpose? Now, these are legislative questions. We have a GAR, a general anti-abuse rule in the Finance Act two thousand and thirteen. Parliament has enacted that rule to say that certain transactions entered into for tax wholly or mainly for tax purposes only, if certain other conditions are satisfied, maybe disregarded. Parliament has done that. It has not done that in relation to non-domestic rating. And what, without any sort of accusation involved in what I'm saying Lord Leggett is proposing, in my submission, is effectively saying, we, the courts, can do something which Parliament has as yet decided not to do. Now, at the moment, in Scotland, and to some extent in Wales, there is a process afoot of bringing non-domestic rating within a local GAR. That has been enacted in Scotland already, but it's not yet in force. But even that is subject to the appropriate minister, the relevant minister, thinking it's appropriate that these rules should come into force, having discussed it with the interested parties. In any event, it's a legislative process in my submission that's required to have such a rule. And in England, in any event, we have not got anywhere near that. And in my respectful submission, it's not for the court. And in my respectful submission, it's not for the courts to imply such a rule.
If I can, if I remember correctly, GAR doesn't stand alone by any means. There's a process by which guidance is issued on as to how it should be applied, which the courts are then required to have regard to.
Yes, exactly. And so that there are all sorts of safeguards and procedures around. And that was one of the important things that was acknowledged when the GAR came into force. And in my submission, it's it's a political question whether non-domestic rating should fall within that net. And it's not for the courts to do so, with the greatest of respect. By implying words into section sixty five along the lines of but we but you shall disregard all transactions entered into for tax avoidance purposes. That is a rule which is not in the statute and should not be implied.
Well, Mr. Professor, it's Lord Briggs here again. I'm trying to apply the Ramsey approach of looking first to construe the statute and then seeing whether the current set of facts or status falls within it, not simply to do a bit of judicial legislation to introduce a GAR where Parliament hasn't done so. It could be said against you that if someone had been asked in Parliament when the owner definition was proposed to be made clear by identifying the person with an immediate legal right to possession, whether that extended to an SPV of this kind upon whom a technical right to possession, which was never intended to be exercised, was conferred purely for tax purposes. The typical member of Parliament might have said, certainly not. Now, you may say that's a very subjective and wishy-washy approach to construction. But it is it is the sort of exercise upon which, under Ramsey, it might be said that we are currently embarked.
Well, two answers to that, if I may. First of all, I would respectfully suggest that a member of Parliament might have said that in connection with the regulations rather than with section sixty five. If he knew what he was talking about, he'd have said, I have no problem with section sixty five. What I have a problem with is regulation four K. If that's the effect that regulation four K has. The second point is, which is perhaps more important, with the greatest of respect, to ask, would would members of Parliament have wanted the legislation to have this result is not a proper exercise in construction. The question is to look at the terms of the statute to construe them in context by reference to identified purposes. There's a case called Westbrook, which was referred to by the Court of Appeal below, where Mr. Justice Mann said, the question is not if someone was asked, is this okay? Or someone in Parliament has asked, is this all right? If they say no, then somehow one's got to construe it so that it doesn't apply. That is not the way to go about it in my submission. That leads to pure speculation as to what Parliament intended. Maybe based on a sort of certain amount of common sense, but nevertheless, it's pure speculation. And the right approach is to look at the purposes of the section by reference to admissible aids to interpretation. And I've submitted why it is that perhaps literal, but in any event, linguistic interpretation gives full effect to the purpose of section sixty five, under the objection, if any, is in regulation four K.
Now, as Professor, I can intervene just for a moment. I've allowed this to to run on because you were being asked a lot of questions. But you will have to draw to an end very shortly before we have a short adjournment.
Yes. I think I've come, I've made my submissions on the Ramsey principle, so unless I can help you further, that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Prosser. Well, in that case, we'll adjourn just now. And at two o'clock, we'll look forward to hearing Mr. Matthew on the on piercing the veil.